If we could please introduce ourselves up here, that would be great.
Bridget Doherty, Communications Manager with Gabrielle Weyler, her awesome inter.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Thank you, Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, President of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. We will get started, we have quite a few items to cover today. First item on the agenda is a comprehensive update COVID-19 and monkeypox virus. Our Commissioner, Health Commissioner Greg Casterman, welcome.
Well, thank you, good afternoon Commissioners, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on both topics. And, boy, the second topic there really has come on quick, and so it's good to continue to get information out regarding monkeypox. So, to start with, here in Hamilton County, we are at 321 cases per day, that's a seven-day average, and as you can tell, it seems like things are stabilizing a little bit. We are not continuing to see large increases daily, which has been good news, and when I talk about hospitalizations, you'll see possibly some of the effects of that as well. As far as distribution around the county, it continues to impact, COVID-19 continues to impact the entire county. I will tell you, if you compare this to one week ago, there is much more lighter red on the map this week in the central portion of the county than there was just one week ago. Once again reflecting possibly a stabilization, maybe even hopeful that a slight decrease in cases is coming our way. So, what is driving the case increases in our community and the high level of cases? It's 100% this BA5 variant, and I think what's amazing is how quickly it spread. From May until today, we saw it become the predominant variant in our community. Eighty-five percent of the cases are the BA5. Disease spreading that quickly, it's very difficult to prevent individuals from getting sick from it. Luckily, though, the cases have not materialized into significant illness. This is another way to look at it, I guess the newest variant that we're kind of starting to keep an eye on with public health is the BA4.6 variant, which now shows up as 3% of the cases within our region. It's very possible that we start to see this over the course of the next couple months take up the majority of cases within our community. Switching to hospitalizations, we have 207 individuals within our hospital, which is the left graph, and as mentioned, you can see once again kind of a stabilization within the hospitals. On the right graph, we have 25 individuals within our intensive care units in our region, and you can see the downward trend that is being projected currently for our ICUs. Both of those are continuing to be very positive metrics, and we are watching those closely. Another view, same data, you can see nowhere close to where we were at the beginning of the year, but we definitely had some impact for our hospitals. For reference, about 8% of the patients within our hospital systems today are COVID-19 positive, and about 14% of those in the ICU are COVID-positive. Now, as mentioned at the end of this presentation, I am going to talk about monkeypox, but I think it's really important not to lose scope of where we are today. In Hamilton County, our residents, we lose one resident every four days to COVID-19. In the United States, we've lost zero residents to monkeypox. So, I'll talk about the seriousness and prevention in a moment with that disease, but I think it's really important to continue as a community to have focus where we know we are having a major impact within our community. Turning to the Centers for Disease Control, we are at 267 cases per 100,000, that puts us in the highest level or threshold with regards to COVID cases. Looking at our community spread, Hamilton County remains in high transmission, as well as all of southwest Ohio. The masking recommendation continues because we know masks have an impact and reduces the spread of all infectious diseases that are respiratory in nature, including COVID-19. This is kind of a time lapse of the state of Ohio, once again, you can just see how quickly BA5 made its way across the state over the course of a month. In the state of Ohio, there are only 19 medium-risk counties and two low-risk counties, the remainder of the counties are all in that high classification. I'd hate to predict, I've had this question many times over the last two weeks, or since we turned high, with those metrics starting to decline, it's possible in the next, you know, 14 days, we start to maybe transition back if these metrics continue to improve as well as they have. So, I'm very hopeful that we'll continue to see some relief. And the last slide I have related to COVID-19 deals with our vaccination efforts, and I'm proud to report that my clinic has vaccinated nearly 1,200 of our youngest, so those six months to five years of age have come through our clinic, which is phenomenal, I'm really proud of the team. It's a very difficult population to vaccinate to, little kids don't always love needles, and so my nurses have been patient and been an excellent provider. We continue to advocate, if somebody is nervous about vaccine, come in, talk. If you have booster questions, you're welcome to just show up to our clinic, there's no wait, anyone is welcome, and we're happy to provide some medical consultation too, at no charge. And our clinics remain free, there's no insurance information traded to get a vaccine. If somebody needs a test kit, we have test kits there, so it's a great environment. Right now, we are at the Board of Elections, and we may have to, you know, as we get closer to the November election, we'll have to transition out, but we will continue to offer this service for our community. Transitioning now over to monkeypox, I think, as mentioned, you know, generally speaking, monkeypox is a self-limiting disease, meaning that on its own, it's going to resolve itself typically. If you see a physician, you might be treated for symptoms, and in the United States, I mentioned, no one has died, and that is because sometimes infections from chickenpox, monkeypox, get infected. In our country, we have antibiotics and great access to them, so if you seek medical care, oftentimes you're able to get those issues resolved. Monkeypox can be painful, so sometimes patients seek medical care to deal with the pain, and hospital systems will admit you and put you on some pain management regimen. Monkeypox spreads to anyone through close personal, often skin-to-skin contact, including direct contact with monkeypox rash, scabs, or body fluids, touching objects, if somebody was in the hospital and had monkeypox and you were changing the bed sheets, you'd want to be careful. And then also, contact with respiratory secretions. That said, the majority of cases are not spread in that way. And then the last way that we have here is, a pregnant person can spread the virus to their fetus through the placenta. Once again, not very common, but it is possible. Up until last week, the only individuals in the state of Ohio who were eligible to get monkeypox vaccinations were Tier One, or individuals who had direct intimate exposure with someone who was positive for monkeypox. And that is because there is limited vaccine right now for monkeypox, and so that vaccine supply is being managed by the Centers for Disease Control, and they're sending the vaccine to the locations where you are a Tier One, that direct contact that I mentioned, or there is the highest prevalence of cases. Starting this week on Wednesday, my clinic will be, we have a clinic that we are setting up to vaccinate those at highest risk, people are able to sign up to get vaccine on my website, as well as the Cincinnati Health Department's website. Our website is hcpH.org. When you go to sign up, it will assess your risk, it will ask you questions to determine your risk, and only those who are at the highest risk for developing monkeypox, or exposing, being exposed to monkeypox are currently eligible to get a vaccine, once again, because vaccine is limited. To put this into perspective, in Hamilton County, we have our supply and the city of Cincinnati's supply, which has been dwindling because we're using some, but right now, approximately 350 total doses of vaccine. So, it's very limited in supply, we anticipate additional vaccines coming to our community over the course of time. Now, once again, to put this into perspective, my last slide showing monkeypox shows national cases of monkeypox. This data is, I pulled it yesterday at 5:00 PM, it changes daily. Right now, New York has 1,800 cases of monkeypox, and so in the nation, they are getting the largest supply of vaccine. Similarly, California has 826 cases, Florida 633, Ohio 45 cases, and this county has three cases, one in my jurisdiction and two within the city of Cincinnati. The last item I'll land with, just like COVID-19, partnerships, collaboration is really critical to our community's success. I've appreciated working with the County Commissioners, I've had many conversations with Commissioner Dreehouse's office, including the press conference this morning, I've worked 100% in alignment with the city of Cincinnati, so there is, if you are eligible to get a vaccine and you come to my clinic, we will vaccinate you, even if you're a city resident. Same will happen in the city of Cincinnati's vaccine clinic. We are 100% aligned on messaging and efforts, which has been one of the biggest learnings from COVID. If we work together and collaborate, we will certainly have the best impact for our community. So, I will stop there, and happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, and thank you for your work, but you're absolutely right, is we have our focus, on where our focus needs to be, which is the COVID-19 virus. Of course, with monkeypox, we want to educate, and messaging is important, but what I don't want is hysteria. I mean, we've had, I think, two press conferences in two weeks, and so, we don't want our people, our residents, I don't want our residents getting all out of shape about this, and it is important to know about, knowledge is power, of course, but we don't want to cause any hysteria, and so that's where I am right now with that. And I, you answered the question at the last part, Hamilton County has three, and if we're not aware, we may have, end up with 30, preferably not, but I just don't want us to go where it seems like we're going, and that's for the county. Now, the city can do what they want to do, as far as how much they need to alert and have press conferences, but I'm not in that, I'm not feeling that way right now, so. But thank you for your work, I thank you for your continuing the vaccinations and what your staff are doing, as usual. So, Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Health Commissioner, and I appreciate it, and while these are negative things, one of the positives is that we have put together, I think, an infrastructure that pulls in not just the city of Cincinnati, but also Norwood, who has their own health department, and Springdale as well, so all the health departments are aligned, along with you, that covers the other areas that you cover from a county perspective, and at a way that also brings in the different hospitals. No longer is it, well, you're at Christ, you can't get a vaccine, and you're over here, you got to go to UC Health over here at the hospital, no, you're over here, you're at Mercy Health now. All of the hospital systems, all of the clinics, everybody has an infrastructure now that has a place where people can go, because it's one Hamilton County for us. Now, maybe other people have these silos, but we have one entire Hamilton County, so I'm happy that we have a place to go. I would ask, though, that I think we've done a lot with, I know we got Test to Protect, and that's good, we have funded to keep that going, but as we transition eventually, 513 Relief has been an easy thing for people to do, and you're right on there, you can hit that button, and if there's something that comes up like a monkeypox or something else, just let us know, and I ask that our, that Bridget, who's done a great job with our website, our portal, to be able to highlight that at the top, so if someone goes there, come in in one portal, it might end up on your website, or end up on somebody else's website with Test to Protect, but they could go there and know that one place, that you could kind of get some answers. I think that one of the issues is when people do see things in the media, and I have a radio show, and I did have Dr. Keith Melvin on to explain what is monkeypox? And most people hear, oh my God, monkeypox, what is monkeypox? And he was able to explain it to a lot of people, because I think education is the key, and I know when we're doing the media, they can't go into large detail because they've got a short segment or only a few little lines, but could you just go over one more time, the people watching, you know, catch, say, monkeypox, state of emergency, and everybody running, and they looking, they say, oh man, I got a pimple over here, I got, do I got monkeypox? What is monkeypox?
So, monkeypox are very much like chickenpox, where they're, it almost looks like a pimple, and it breaks out in different parts of your body, and they're, it's pus-filled lesion on your skin. To test for monkeypox, unlike COVID-19, where you can run to a physician or pick up a test kit and swab your nose even when you're asymptomatic, monkeypox requires that you actually have those lesions to be tested. The doctor will abrasively rub the lesion and send that off for the analysis to determine if you have monkeypox. So, the worried, well, you must have lesions to have it, you must actually be presenting with these pox before you can get tested. Generally speaking, monkeypox, right now in the nation, is primarily in the men having sex with men category, although it is possible that the general population can get it, we have seen cases of individuals get it. In addition, if you're a primary care provider or a physician seeing a patient with monkeypox, you are able to get it as well. In fact, some of our first vaccines here in our county were administered to a physician and a nurse who came in contact with a patient with monkeypox. Once you have developed monkeypox, you are not able to be vaccinated, there's no benefit for the vaccine because you already have the infection, and you have to either heal, there is an antiviral that folks can get, but that is also in limited supply at this time.
Okay, so we got limited supply, you can't get vaccinated once you have it, we only got 300, okay, you maybe talk about, we only got 300 now, you're saying, does everybody running out trying to get, because now everybody wants to get vaccinated? You said now you're just going to website, and there will be some symptoms, can you talk about that?
Yeah, so on our website, we would encourage, if you're worried, you fill out our survey, and you can be put on our waitlist for vaccine. In addition, if you do that, you'll get an email that talks about some prevention strategies, including being more cautious with intimate partners, and being aware of your body, and making sure that if you do have lesions, you talk to your primary care physician. At this time, monkeypox vaccination in the state of Ohio is only eligible, and I think in the nation, is only eligible for the three tiers shown on the slide here, so people at risk for occupational exposures, and individuals identified as close contacts or direct exposures. Once again, those exposures are somebody who had intimate contact with someone with known monkeypox, and regardless of the vaccine clinics, if that occurs, we're working with primary care providers, even if I'm out of vaccine, to request vaccine straight from the CDC to go to that provider. For Tier Two, attendees at events and venues linked to a known monkeypox transmission, or Tier Three, individuals likely to have prolonged intimate contact that would put them at higher risk of being exposed, they are eligible to sign up and are placed in the higher risk categories and eligible to get vaccinated as vaccine becomes available. Once again, if you're concerned about your risks, there are some behavioral changes, less partners, and other things that you can do, avoiding touching open wounds on another individual, that can reduce your risk and opportunity to get monkeypox.
Tier Two is very broad, I mean, it's at events and venues, you might be at some places with thousands of people, I don't know if they got monkeypox or not, that's a pretty broad area. When you talk about touching, do we need to go back to the plastic gloves? I'm asking all the questions that the people have been asking me. We first had coronavirus, is what it was called at first, before we got a new name for it, we had to put on the plastic gloves and don't touch each other, were we talking about handshaking, we're talking about hugging, what are we talking about?
So, in general, you must come in direct contact with that scab, or clothing that has been in direct contact. So, is there some risk if you were to go to, say, for example, a rave, or some sort of a large, close gathering? Yes, although in our community, we have three cases, so that risk is extremely minimal at this time in our community. In other communities that have a more generalized population, or a more clustered population where we're seeing cases, including in New York, where there's 1,800 cases, the strategy becomes different, the CDC sends more vaccine, and we try to quickly vaccinate more of the population that's at highest risk. If we had infinite vaccine, I think the playbook would look different, but that's not where we're at today.
Gotcha, well, that's good to know, I just, my last question would be, does this hand sanitizer do anything with monkeypox? And if you're traveling, what should you do? You may travel to New York, you may travel to, I think Atlanta cases are growing, what do you do if you're traveling? Is the sanitizer going to do anything? Is your mask, gloves, what do you do?
You know, any time you wear a mask, you're reducing your intake of any types of germs that are airborne in nature, any type of respiratory virus. So, wearing a mask on an airplane where you're sitting next to a bunch of people, even before COVID-19, oftentimes people would travel and come home and have the common cold, or get a flu right after traveling on an airplane. So, tools like masks are certainly effective at reducing the spread of infectious disease. Most important, though, with monkeypox, just avoid touching people with scabs, so if somebody has scabs on their hands, probably no handshaking. If a friend of yours you're visiting and they have known scabs, you know, you can see scabs on their person, or they tell you they have scabs and are concerned, I probably would not recommend a hug at that time. But generally, we don't need to be afraid as a population, we should continue to enjoy life and just be aware right now of your surroundings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner, for being here this afternoon. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight the collaboration between the city, the county, Public Health for the county, Public Health for the city, UC Health has been involved, other hospitals have been involved, in trying to better understand how to communicate out to the folks in this community, so that we can get ahead of any kind of spread here, we've only got three cases, which is good news. So, I think the education effort and the information that you have put out in conjunction with the city and others, has been really important to help people understand what monkeypox is, and how they can be safe in their behavior to try to avoid catching monkeypox. Also, I want to highlight that, so between a week's time, you know, a week ago, we were talking about folks that had been exposed to someone with active monkeypox, going to their primary care physician, and those were the only ones getting the vaccine, that has changed, and so now we're in a much more preventive posture, where folks that think they are at risk can get the vaccine to prevent the, you know, any kind of reaction to an exposure. So, I just want to highlight one more time that the city has a website, the county has a website, if folks would like to get the vaccine, they go onto those portals, they put in their risk factors, and then there is a queue, and so, to what you've said, we have a limited supply, and we will continue to have a limited supply, but there is a queue being formed for those, and you are making an evaluation as to how those vaccines goes out, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, and at this time, we have, between us and the city, we have approximately 450 people that have registered in varying degrees of risk, including low risk, who at this time are not eligible per the Centers for Disease Control, but that list we are managing, my team is actively calling people today and signing them up for a clinic, and tomorrow, beginning tomorrow, they'll be vaccinated, which will be part of our prevention strategy.
Can you remind us of the website?
I know my website is hcpH.org.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Item, Agenda Item Two is recommendations for 2022 nonprofit service grants. Maria Collins is here, from Community Development, the Administrator, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Reese, good afternoon, Commissioner Summerau-Dumas, good afternoon, Commissioner Dreehouse. So, today I am here to present, can you all hear me okay through this?
They can not hear.
Okay, I'll just, if it's okay, I'll kind of lower this. So, today I'm here to present the Community Development Advisory Committee's 2022 CDBG Nonprofit Services Recommendations. And I would, oh, I have the, okay. So, I would like to start out the presentation with a summary of the Nonprofit Services RFP. The Nonprofit Services RFP Competitive Awards began in 2018. A maximum of 15% of the county's CDBG grant award is applied to this program. This year, $450,000 of CDBG funds are available for the nonprofit services program. Requests for proposals were issued on May 17th, 2022, the proposals were due on June 10th of 2022. The maximum, the minimum request for the nonprofit services award is $50,000, there is no maximum request for this grant. The proposals that were accepted, were accepted for the following services, for nonprofit services, pharmaceutical care, employment training and workforce development, eviction prevention, legal services for seniors, academic and social support for high school students, alleviation of care needs for cancer patients, food support to families in the region, entrepreneurship training for minority groups, supporting other nonprofit organizations, dental care and professional employment, and legal services for humanitarian immigration needs. This year, we received 12 applications for a total request of $1,55,100. And I'd also like to note that there were public notices that were issued through the Cincinnati Enquirer and the Herald newspapers for 15 days. There were also, there was also a mass email that went out to 82 nonprofit agencies listed in the county's Constant Contact List, and the public notice was also posted on the Hamilton County Community Development's webpage, just to give you a little note as to how this information was put out into the public. Of the 12 applications, all 12 were eligible services for a total expenditure or nonprofit budget of $450,000. On June 23rd and July 7th, July 20th and July 21st, CDAC discussed and deliberated over each of the applications by ranking and scoring to come up to their final recommendation of the $450,000 allocation for this year. What you see now is the recommendations of CDAC for the 2022 nonprofit services funding, and I will go down the list in regards to the ranking. The highest ranked CDAC ranking was Cincy Smiles, the average score they received from CDAC was 79. Cincy Smiles' initial request was $70,000, CDAC recommended an award of $70,000. Proseniors, their average score was 78, their funding request was $55,000, CDAC recommended $55,000. The next was St. Vincent De Paul Charitable Pharmacy, their average score was 78, their initial request was $125,000, CDAC recommended $60,000. The next was Immigrant and Refugee Law Center, their average score was 78, their initial funding request was $125,000, CDAC recommended $100,000. The next was Legal Aid, Clearing Hurdles to Employment, the average score was 74, the funding request was $65,000, CDAC recommended $65,000. Legal Aid, Eviction Prevention Program, CDAC scored it, gave it an average score of 71, the initial request was $100,000, CDAC did not recommend this application for funding. The next application was Legal Aid's Foreclosure Prevention, the average score was 69, the funding request was $85,000, CDAC did not recommend funding. The next item was Boys and Girls Club of Greater Cincinnati, the average score was 68, the funding request was $50,000, CDAC recommended $50,000. The next application was Economic and Community Development Institute, their average score was 62, the funding request was $50,000. The funding request was $50,000. CDAC did not recommend for funding. Uh, Tacoon Farm, their average score was fifty-nine. The funding request was $90,100. CDAC recommended $50,000. Cincinnati Cares, average score was fifty-nine. Their funding request was $190,000. CDAC did not recommend for funding. Pink Ribbon Girls, average score was fifty-six. Their funding request was $50,000. CDAC did not recommend for funding. The total funding requested for twenty-two, for 2022, was $1,055,100. Total recommended funding by CDAC for 2022 was $450,000. Um, the next slide shows the previous funding from 2018 to 2022. Uh, also, I would like to note that 2022 is what's being presented today as recommendations from CDAC. But to give you an overview of, uh, the funding, CDBG funding over the last five years, Dress for Success was funded, was funded in, uh, twenty, uh, twenty. Women Helping Women was funded in 2021. La Soup was funded in 2021. Cincy Smiles was funded in 2021, and they're being recommended for funding in 2022. Pink Ribbon Girls was funded in 2021. Immigrant and Refugee Law Center, uh, is being, uh, requesting or recommended for funding, uh, for the first time this year. Boys and Girls Club is being recommended for funding for the first time this year. Tacoon Farm is being recommended for funding for the first time this year. Cincinnati Cares, uh, somehow missed that, but they were funded in 2021. And Economic and Community Development Institute, uh, applied for the first time this year, but were not recommended for funding. Uh, moving on, uh, Free Store Food Bank was funded in 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021. Free Store Food Bank did not apply this year. Legal Aid Society's Foreclosure Prevention and Emergency Mortgage Assistance Program was funded in 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021. They were not recommended for funding this year. Lydia's House was funded in 2018, 2019, 2020. They were not funded in '21, and they were not recommend, uh, they did not apply in '22. Legal Aid Society's Rental Assistance Eviction Prevention Program was funded in 2019, 2020, 2021. They were not recommended for funding in '22. Legal Aid's new program, Clearing Hurdles to Employment Assistance, is receiving funding for the first time this year. Saint Vincent De Paul was funded in 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, and are being recommended for funding in 2022. Working in Neighborhoods was funded in 2018, 2019. They did not apply this year. Proseniors was funded in 2020, '21, and are being recommended for funding in '22. Mortar was funded in 2020. They did not apply this year. ICRON Corporation was funded in 2020. They did not apply this year. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I just had a couple of questions.
Okay.
If we can tell the audience who CDAC is, so they'll know who's reviewing these, uh, applications.
Yes. So, CDAC is a committee made up of, uh, ten, uh, individuals that were appointed by the, uh, Board of County Commissioners. And I can actually tell you where they are from. Just give me a minute to get that information. Yes. So, uh, CDAC is, uh, the CDAC Committee is represented by the Township Administrator from Corrine Township, uh, Jeffrey Milts. The District Director.
And you don't have to say the names. You can just say what.
Okay, District Director of the Junior Achievement of OKI Partners, uh, the Economic Success Coach of Santa Maria Community Services, the Asset Manager for Cincinnati Development Fund, the Village Planning Commissioner, um, he's retired and he's serving as a volunteer, Executive Director of Our Daily Bread, Economic Development Manager of Kroger, Managing Attorney of Legal Aid Society of Southwest Ohio. And he did recuse himself, uh, because Legal Aid had three applications in. Um, Director of Administrative Services, Springfield Township, and Property, Property Maintenance and Code Enforcement, City of Springdale.
Thank you very much. Um, just a couple of other questions. I noticed that some of the applicants had higher scores, but they were not recommended. And then I was thinking, was it because of the frequency of funding? And it doesn't seem that way. But I was just wondering, what variables did you use that may have had a lower score but were still recommended?
Yes. And let me, let me go back to that slide. Okay. So that everyone can kind of see where we're going here. So, um, yes. Boys and Girls Club, uh, was recommended for funding, uh, over the Legal Aid's, uh, Prevention, Evictions Program and Prevention Foreclosure Program. The CDAC Committee, they discussed Legal Aid's programs at length. And the committee felt that the applications for eviction and foreclosure prevention, they are great programs, but they had received funding for several years. Um, and they were concerned with the agency becoming dependent on these funds. CDAC wanted to give other agencies an opportunity, uh, to receive this, uh, CDBG funding, specifically smaller and first-time applicants. CDAC did recommend, um, as I noted before, Legal Aid's new program, um, Clearing Hurdles to Employment, uh, be funded for 2022. And then, of course, after Legal Aid's, uh, eviction and prevention programs, as you can see from, uh, the table here, uh, the next highest ranking program was the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Cincinnati. And so, they, of course, were next in line for rec, uh, for funding or to be recommended for funding.
Thank you so much. And, um, I might have mentioned it the last time as we look at funding, um, streams that some of these organizations receive, not just from us,
Mm-hmm.
but from outside entities. So, we can, uh, cause I'm looking, a few of them look familiar from that State Task Force when we were allocating money. So, I don't know if the application that they fill out indicates, have you gotten funding from the state? Or, I don't know if it does, but if not, I would just recommend that we include all funding that they've received that year or something.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I have a couple of questions. The asterisks.
Yes.
Some have double asterisks, some have one. Was that meaning?
Yes. Though, uh, actually, those were asterisks that I meant to take out of the presentation. Um, just more or less notes to me, um, regarding, uh, those two, um, applicants. Boys and Girls Clubs being one. And, and the reason that I did asterisk those was because there were, um, applicants that scored a little higher than each. So, I just wanted to make sure to speak to those. And, um, actually, you pointing those out, Commissioner Reese, I would also want to just make a point to, or note to Tacoon Farm. I want to make sure I say that correctly. Tacoon Farm, um, CDAC, they appreciated ECD's application and, and they felt that the service they provide is a very valuable service. However, food insecurity, um, being, uh, issue throughout the county, um, and foods, the Free Store Food Bank not applying this year, um, they felt that emergency assistance to food is needed more than ever in light of COVID and what's taking place with COVID. And Tacoon Farm was the only application that we received that responds to, that provides food access and responds significantly to COVID. Now, although they, ECDI, ECDI, Farm didn't accurately represent, uh, their significant level of leverage at, by neglecting to account for substantial volunteers and in-kind donation. So, CDAC felt that if they would have, uh, factored in the total leverage, they would have ranked higher than, uh, ECDI. So.
Thank you, uh, thank you for that. Uh, I was going to bring up Free Store Food Bank. I was, uh, a speaker at the, uh, Greater Cincinnati Chamber event last week. And so, I was shocked that, um, Free Store did not apply because, and I'll put this, uh, to our administrator to follow up. Uh, in the, uh, in my presentation, the question was, uh, that there's a great need, there's an emergency, and Kirk, uh, put in there that they wanted to know, was there any additional funding available? So, I'm confused about them not applying this. And just last week, they said they wanted to know was there any more money that we could help them with because they're with inflation, et cetera. They are overflowing with people that are in need.
Um, Madam President, Madam Vice President, we, we certainly have a, a strong, um, relationship with the Free Store, so we can reach out and just make sure that they're connected to all the, and we've provided them, as this board is aware, um, various streams of funding, whether it's been through Community Development, ARPA, et cetera. But we can just reach out and make sure they're aware of the, the different, uh, funding tracks that we have and the, uh, the timelines for those as we move forward.
That'd be great. Yeah, I remember us voting on, um, lots of, well, not lots, but a, a great deal of money. Um, so that, I was shocked to hear that and then hear this presentation. They did not apply this year. My other question is, um, just for, just probably from my own knowledge, when you look at the past, uh, CDBG funding, it, who got funded? And you look at the totals, we go anywhere from $410,000 in 2018, then we get to nineteen, 2019, $832,480. We go to 2020, 1.225 million. Um, $750,000 in '21, and now $450,000. How does that work in terms of, we only have $450,000, I guess, available this year?
Right.
But we had more these other years.
Yes. So, like I mentioned, that, uh, the nonprofit services funding is fifteen percent, uh, or fifteen percent cap of our, uh, CDBG funds. Those funds we applied to this program. The 1.225 million that was, um, available in 2020, those included, uh, COVID dollars. So, we, there was a, a large influx of, uh, funds from the federal government uh, for COVID, uh, to prevent and, uh, respond to the pandemic at that time. So, that's why you see there's more available. And there was a, uh, there were more agencies that were able to apply for funding at that time, of course, because there was more funding to go around. Uh, the $750,000 is just a transfer of funds that were not all spent down in 2021, and they rolled over, I'm sorry, in 2020, and they were rolled over into 2021. So, we're, as you can see, at, at the initiation of the program in 2018, we were around $418,000. That kind of doubled, sort of doubled in 2019. I'm not really sure why that doubled in 2019. But the, the large injection in 2020 that carried over into 2021 are, uh, representative of the pandemic funding. Uh, we're, now we're kind of getting back down into, uh, the, uh, average, uh, funding for this program, which would be between $450,000 and $500,000. Cause it's based on our CDBG, uh, allocation of over, just over $3 million. And that seems to have been the average over the years, is about $3 million and some change. So, fifteen percent of that would go into our nonprofit program.
Gotcha. And my final question is, Saint Vincent De Paul, um, you said the average score was seventy-eight. Um, the only one beat him out was Cincy Smiles. And they requested $125,000. Um, and they came back and said, no, we're gonna give them $60,000. And then you have, uh, the Immigrant and Refugee Law Center also got seventy-eight. They requested $125 as well, and they got $100,000. So, what was the thinking on Saint Vincent, uh, De Paul Charity Pharmacy?
Yes. So, uh, if we're looking at the five-year spread here, let me just, uh, see if I can. So, Saint Vincent De Paul, yes. They're like towards the bottom. Um, as you'll notice, Saint Pi, Saint Vincent De Paul, their funding, um, was actually just about cut in half for 2022. This is one of those agencies, once again. I mean, what they do, the services they provide are definitely needed and they're wonderful services and programs. But, uh, like with, uh, Legal Aid, they have received funding basically all four years, five years of the program, of the nonprofit services program. So, to, uh, CDAC's thinking, once again, to provide opportunity for other agencies, uh, to receive block grant funding, to help with their capacity and to, you know, get their services out. Instead of funding them the full, uh, ask, their full ask, and I don't have it in front of me at the moment, but they still funded them because the service is so greatly needed. We're talking free pharmaceuticals to, to seniors and low mod in-kind individuals. Not, you know, to not fund them at all. They at least felt that this program should still receive some, you know, some funding, some assistance, but also allow opportunities for some other programs as well to receive block grant money.
Yeah, thanks. I, I think there needs to be a balance, but we'd also need to be on needs. This can't be a program of, oh, we want to help everybody. This one didn't have it, so we're gonna do this one. I mean, senior citizens, this is life and death if they don't get their medicine. So, I'd like to know how many seniors are affected. Uh, I understand it's going up, but so is the price of medicine. And, um, you know, I, we want to fund everybody, but we gotta look at what are, the need is still there. Um, and if it's between somebody getting their medicine or me trying to fund a new program because we want to say, I want to do something, give everybody a chance.
Right.
Uh, I'm gonna bet on the seniors and their medicine every time. So, I just want to know, I know we can look at numbers and it looks like, oh, well, they got $100,000, they got $200,000. Oh, well, let me, I'm gonna shave off this and put them at ten and put them at, this is, these are people.
Yes.
And if somebody is, you know, on the verge of not getting their medicine and could die, I want to make sure that, I, my goal is not, I'm trying to open it up for everybody to get a chance. I'm trying to open it up for what the need is. And if that need, I'm not familiar exactly with their whole program, but I know the price of medicine has jumped through the roof. I know that in Congress, they didn't get the bill passed on the insulin, putting a $35 cap. That did not pass. So, uh, you know, I want to put some more emphasis on not, you know, we got the spread out and I want, you know, Suzie and Johnny and Tommy and everybody to get a piece of the action. I want some action that's gonna save some lives. And I want our money going to, if this is life and death, we gotta put that first.
Yes.
Uh, and they, they did a good job and said they, they ranked high. But, you know, already they're at 120, asking for 125, they were getting 225. And believe me, medicine didn't never went down. It's only going up. So, um, I just want to speak for myself, I'm not speaking for the whole board, but I'm gonna speak for myself, is that I want to put some emphasis on, you know, people need these medicines. And we got too many senior citizens really waiting to give up.
Yes.
Cause they just can't afford it. And, you know, the, uh, the bread is extra costing more and everything else is costing more, but they don't hang, they don't get more. They're on fixed income. So, I just don't want to, you know, just look at it and say, I want to, you know, we love to fund everybody, obviously. But I think those that hit life and death should come first. So, um, might be too late, but I would like to relook at that.
Okay.
And make sure that they have what they need and how many people will not get their medicine based on this, this cut that we are proposing. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Dre House.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Um, just one question related to the organizations that did not apply. Do you have any idea of why they didn't? I, I especially note some of the ones that got funding, um, one time and then didn't apply again. I, I don't know if it was a matter of capacity on their end, um, or, or what. Do you have any sense of that?
Um, no, I, I, I don't know why they didn't apply this year. Um, as I stated earlier- As I stated earlier, that, about the public notice process and that the public notice did go out, we do public notice through the locals, local newspapers. And through our constant contact list, there were 82 nonprofits that were contacted through emails that are in that, in our contact list. And then, of course, the notice being published on our county's community development webpage. So why they, you know, they didn't apply or didn't see the public notice, I really can't speak to that.
Okay, I, I guess, I wonder if we can do a follow-up with some of the organizations that have received funding from this program in the past, just to get a better sense of that. I'm especially interested in organizations like MORTER and La Soup, both of which hit a target area of concern, and neither of whom applied. And so I'm just curious to know, they've gotten money before out of this program. It's curious to me that they didn't apply for it again. So if you could, you know, do follow-up with all of the ones that didn't apply, Free Store Food Bank is on that list too, and see if maybe there's something that, I don't know, I have no idea what that was, just, just let's get some, some information around it.
Yeah, okay, definitely, I'll, I'll pull that information together.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think that other lists of adding on additional funding from other sources may help us better understand why maybe some of our nonprofit services receive less, because I know Free Store comes up a lot. And also, St. Vincent de Paul, I know specifically, they came up in another arena. But if we know that they're getting state or local or something, then we won't be as, not as concerned, but at least they're getting money from somewhere, maybe not from us. So, and I just want to thank the, the time that your committee took to, to evaluate these applications, certainly appreciate it. What's the next step on this?
So the next step is that the county administrator will then give his approval to move forward with the process. And after that, then the awardees will be notified via letter. And once they have been notified, then I will begin to get the contracts prepared, the funding agreements prepared for funding. Once those have been approved to form, we'll come back to the board for your approvals for the administrator to execute those contracts.
All right, thank you so very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let me make an announcement. Anyone in this room or in the building needs to have a mask on. So if you don't have a mask and you're not speaking like she was, please, if you could exit and go find one, we have, we do have extra ones. Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay. Excuse me. Thank you. Okay, item number three, conserve to preserve, Hamilton County, Ralph Lenny. There he is, facilities, come forward, I know you love being in front of the podium.
Once a year, just once a year.
Okay, how are you today?
I am doing excellent.
Good.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I just, before we get started, we've got a number of speakers on this item, and this is an attempt to understand where the county is related to sustainability and green infrastructure and those kinds of things, because this commission has talked a lot about EVs and other things that we want to do to move the county into a more green space. And I use green in the term of, you know, conservation and sustainability. And so I just want to thank them all for coming. Chris Harding in my office helped organize this presentation, and I think it will give us a roadmap moving forward. Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and get started. Back in June, I sent to the commissioners and county administration a 60-plus page report about where we stood in 2021 in energy. The main thing is our statement, it's the objective of the Department of County Facilities to deliver reliable energy at a minimum cost. In order to fulfill this responsibility, this organization must have the support and cooperation of county departments, elected officials, and county employees. And this has occurred. I could go through all our different efforts and our statements there, but we'll move forward to the next one. These are the buildings, basically, that affect the energy in the departments of county facilities. We maintain all of these, except for the Almsen Depki comes directly from the General Fund, Almsen Depki comes through chargebacks to JFS.
They can't hear you, Ralph, if you come closer or however you want to, if you feel comfortable pulling it down, but yeah.
I'm comfortable pulling it down.
Okay.
Okay, as I was saying, we manage 15 major buildings as part of the energy management. All of these come out of the General Fund, with the exception of Almsen Depki, and that's reimbursed by Job and Family Services. This does not include Paul Brown Stadium, the DDS facilities, and a county engineer who has piggybacked on the contracts that we have issued for natural gas and for electricity. So the savings that will be shown will not show up.
I can't hear you, sorry.
Cannot hear me.
Just want to move a little closer to the mic there.
Okay, how's that? Can you hear me now?
Can, can the microphones go up a little more or not? So we'll check it, okay. All right, Ralph.
Something that we do right here. Does your mic go on?
They're working on the speaker, they're working on.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead, go ahead, Ralph.
Okay, I will talk louder.
That's good, yeah.
All right.
Okay, he said yeah.
This, this is how I yell at my cat at home. Basically, we have two major agreements. One is our electric par through the CCao, the Energy is presently, has a commitment through the end of '23 to provide electricity. We also have a natural gas agreement through the CCao with IS Energy, and that goes through the end of '24. Basically, we've been very successful in the idea of bidding out our natu, our natural electricity. We started first working through our purchasing department, and then we shifted the last time with the CCao. As a result, we got our lowest rate that we have ever had, that was in 2019. That is a fixed rate for the term of the contract, every year is the same, it does not go up. And that's just for the commodity side, not the T and D side of the electric bill. Basically, you can see here, the savings we have incurred over the time period. As you notice, the last three or four years, the savings compared to the Duke rates has decreased. This is because of the open market situation where Duke has sold their coal plants. So they're buying on the open market, just like CCao is buying it through Palmer Energy for the 50-plus counties that's involved in it. Same, natural gas, the county has been involved in this before I came, starting the year 2000, and I was involved in starting it up at Cuyahoga County back then, the year 2000. We have been very successful. We have saved over 1.3 million through this program. One of the things that's key with this is the fact that it, it gets complicated to a certain degree, depending how many cold days we have during the year versus electricity is pretty stable. So you'll see some variations in the savings and the usage because of degree days. This is basically the savings. As you can see, we pretty well average about 40,000 to 50,000 a year. Last year, we did better compared to what the Duke rate would be charged on your bill. Deregulation. Right now, we had a plan in the past where we were saving money by using the boilers over at the courthouse in such a way that they'd be available since we had to provide steam to the Justice Center, that if we needed, if CGND needed to, or Duke Energy needed to, they could ask us to turn them off for natural gas supply. As a result, we would burn oil. We were getting paid to do that. It turned out, as time went on, things changed, the savings weren't there, one year we had a negative. Now with the performance contracting, we are going to have boilers full-time at the Justice Center. So we have walked away from the program because those boilers will not be running full-time during the summer. But we did save over the time period approximately, in fact, I can't even read the number from here, 800, 600, or 800,000 dollars. Next thing we done, it was started before I came by Jack Mifindorf, when he was the county facilities director, a master plan to see how we could save energy. And we have followed that plan, we have updated it. We were one of the first counties, I can't take credit for it, but one of the first counties to have a master plan. The county did get award from the governor for this plan, when they were still passing out awards for energy savings in the past. Basically, you add everything up, 27 million dollars has been saved through these programs over the time period. Basically, it's annual savings of over a million dollars a year. This is how I try to manage what is going on, is how is our usage of electricity? Dollars comes after you decrease your usage. Prices go up, we can't control prices, but we can control usage. Usage is controlled several ways. One, my building managers, I have seven of them, their job is to run the building most efficiently, at the same time, making sure the service level is there for the occupants in the building, the public, as well as the employees. As you can see, it has decreased. Now, this does not include the animal shelter or the crime lab, they're not included in these numbers at this point in time. So we have basically went from 40.2 down to 28.4. We are getting close to hitting the goal of 50% that we had with District 2030. It will be a lot of effort to get there because what our challenge is, obviously, we have three facilities that are 24/7, the 911, juvenile detention, and the Justice Center. So it's going to make it a challenge to get there, but I think it could be achievable. Natural gas usage, as you can see, it varies. If you go back and you check the winters, you'll see where it went up and went down depending on how soon winter would start in October and in the degree days. But we had definitely cut that consumption by new boilers and improve.
Think of the cat, think of the cat.
Okay, and improve building management systems. The other thing that we've done, that I started, is the Energy Star program as a benchmarking. This is the program by US EPA to see how well our buildings compare. Now, some of our buildings don't qualify. The Justice Center is one, 2020, and the 91 Center, because there's not categories. But our office buildings and the courthouse do apply, and we have been doing, in fact, we're putting 13 buildings into the system to keep track of where we're at. It also keeps track of greenhouse emissions and show, and I didn't include that in the charts, but it is in the report, by buildings showing how much we have decreased in usage in that area. So we are monitoring that and been monitoring that for about the last 15 years. Basically, if you get a score of higher than 75, that means you're in the top 25% of the buildings that's in the, in the pool. That number, the benchmark changes every year. EPA made some changes due to the pandemic, we did still qualify. They are constantly making new changes to the equation they use this year because of the number of people who are staying home and not working in the buildings. And that's a factor, is how many people's in the buildings, how they use it to factor how well you are running your building. That's just another summary of where we're at, that we're adding two buildings coming, which will be the crime lab and the animal shelter will be added to keeping track. Here is our scores, our buildings. The one I'm most proud of is taking a look at the Almsen Depki. Back in 2012, it was ranked 57%. This last year is in the top 10% at 90. This is due to the things that Tony Montre has done in that building, Steve Terahan as the building manager, and Burke Watts as the project manager, taking care of the performance contracting. And that number, we hope, will stay there, and we're going to be replacing the lighting in that building later this year, early next year, and that should also drive down electrical usage in that facility. As you can see, the building that's up there, it's been there the longest, it's 800 Broadway, it's been, I think now 15 years it's been ranked. It was our first building to make Energy Star, and been very well, even though it's an older building, it's very well maintained and operated. Performance contracting. This is where we have outside firm through RFP proposal process, and it has been Amaresco twice now, that goes in and takes a look and do an energy audit of the building, identify where we can save money by changing how we do things, how we operate the building, changing the performance criteria, when we go out and replace our equipment, looking at different ways. One thing is we got solar panels on two buildings that a lot of people don't realize. Also looking at new building automation systems by having the same one in every building. So trading is better, employees knows what to do. They also monitor annually what we have done in the buildings to point out situations, and that will continue with the guaranteed savings that they have provided in the agreement that we have with them going forward. This is a very interesting chart. It shows the savings in blue is the savings from us bidding out our electricity. The savings in, I guess you want to call that pink, is the savings in dollars that's been identified by the improvements that we have made, which would be the reduction in electricity those items are using. It clearly shows that the performance contracting has been a successful approach that this county has taken in the buildings on our facilities. Also, Paul Brown Stadium also has used Amaresco as well as the Gray American Ballpark to achieve energy savings down there as part of the performance contracting that's been done. Natural gas, here you see the savings as we start to implement some of the changes in our building heating systems, you're starting to see those savings occur, particularly last year. So this is an example, again, of the return on bidding out the natural gas, as well as the results of the performance contracting. Water usage, we can't bid out water, we got one place to get it from, we have nowhere else to, to pump it from, or we don't collect it and reuse it. But what we were able to do is take a look at what we did in performance contracting to reduce the usage of water by changing the type of faucets we had, some reduction. We have seen major savings, as you can see, in the water usage and the dollar savings that comes with that. Basically, when you get down to it, bidding out our electricity has saved about 9.8 million dollars since 2010. Performance contracting has saved 7.3 million dollars in electric, natural gas. We've saved almost a million in bidding out natural gas. And in performance contracting, about 2.2 million dollars has been saved. Decrease in water and sewer costs has been about 1.7 million. And then the tariff program, which we're no longer doing, was a, was about 800,000 dollars. So in total, we can clearly identify 24.2 million dollars has been saved, as well as what we've done for the environment by reducing our need for carbon by using less electricity. One of the things that we're looking at is continuing to finish our energy audit, taking care of the improvements we're going to be doing over at JFS, replacing the lighting, and looking to see if there's anything else. When we replaced the building system, this county got an award for life cycle costing back in the year 2000. As we look at the total cost of a piece of equipment, over the life of equipment, instead of what is the cheapest way to buy, and that affects the operating costs as well as the cost of the energy used to use it. We'll continue in the Duke Energy Smart Saver Program. Thermal Tech Engineering, our present MEP, design consultant, works with Duke to look and find everything that we can save and stays in contact with them for us, along with Tony Montre doing that too. We do have a letter intent that you all agreed to several years ago through the CCao to buy solar power. It's been put on hold because they got to get the permits, agreed to through the federal government. Hopefully, when I talk to... Hopefully, when I talked about two weeks ago to the people at CCAO and Palmer Energy, we're finally on the docket, the solar plant is finally on the docket to be reviewed for approval to proceed. So when that information comes out, I'll be having an update for the board as to where we stand and where the recommendation is to proceed or not, or to look at another avenue at that time. Here's the information on that. Well, I'd like to thank the following individuals. This is the results of these individuals taking heart the energy program. Tony Montre's been here before me, he's been very instrumental in trying to find ways to save money, trying to look at things, the best way to operate, the best equipment to buy. He's been a huge asset to this county. Bert Watts, who couldn't be here today because he has COVID nineteen, he is the one who basically has managed the contracts and the program with Amoresco, as well as some improvements through Thermal Tech Engineering and replacement and been an asset in making sure that we got what has been promised to us. My seven building managers, daily, they're the ones who take care of the buildings, making sure that when we can turn down the air conditioning, or turn up the air conditioning on weekends and down during the working days and vice versa, and the heat, that we are using only the energy we need to use and keeping the systems maintained. The filters change, all the things that allows you to use the minimum amount of energy to blow the air through the ductwork and through the systems. Also, Terry Cannon, who's been an energy consultant with this county before I came, very active from Thermal Tech Engineering, certified, very much caring, he's the main one who puts this data, the report for me over the years, has been instrumental as a person who cares about what happens in this county. They're the ones who's made this program successful, and I just want to give them credit. Any questions?
Well, you have someone with you also, don't you? You have someone with you?
Yeah, Tony Montre is hiding over there.
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge him, that he's, you want to stand up and get a applause along with your leader? I just want to say the savings, the financial savings are so impressive, and as you were saying earlier, the environmental savings is just really something that, as a county, we can be proud of. About two months ago, I talked to Jeff, our administrator, about can you pull together something for solar and, you know, solar roofing and clean air and water and all that? And so I discussed all that, had a discussion with Ohio Environmental Council and also Sierra Club, and talked about the figures and what we've been doing and the impact. And we are an example for this whole region. And so when I shared all those successes, they were really impressed. So you have, you guys have a lot to be proud of, and I know at four thirty, in the summer, you want to get out of here, and in the winter, the heat goes off, you want to get out of here. But I thank you for this thorough report, and I've been sharing it, whenever I can share it, I do, and I started a while ago sharing it. So, Vice President Reese.
Thank you for your report, really appreciate it. I know some of the things, last year, I see some, some of the slides last year, some of the things that were done, and one of the things, it seems as though we were a leader in this. My question is, I know we've got the audit coming, and I know we're waiting on the Ohio Association of County Commissioners to be able to do the solar. Are there any other items? I know we got the light bulbs and those kind of things, is there anything else that, I know we started out as a leader, we want to stay as a leader, what other things that you would like to see?
There is, there is a couple of things. The question is, are they worth the cost? One perfect example is replacement of all the windows in the courthouse needs to be done, but they are all custom windows required by historical society, and every time we do an energy audit savings, there's not enough money unless the county provides a large amount of seed money. The other thing that we are going to be doing in the next several years is repairing the facades on the building because we're leaking out cooling and heat during the seasons because the facades have cracks in them, and they will need to be replaced. And those projects are in the CIP. Those appear right now until some new technology comes along. We will, we're getting close to the end cycle of the roofs. Replacement program probably will be starting in about five years, and at that point, we will be looking at how we can increase the R factor on the roof, and if it makes sense that the roof should be white in this part of the country to reflect the sunlight or not. This area is very interesting, we fall between one or the other. There's, winter may be better not to have white roofs, in the summer it might be. So we're in that strange part of the country, as we know for weather, we never know what we're going to get. So those are what we're basically looking at. Almost all the easy stuff has been found and taken care of, but if this technology changes, improvements will be made.
Thank you, and there's some new buildings that we have, you had mentioned, that we're going to be, some are renovated, some new things. I know a new building was done prior to me, the Coroner's Building, but talk to a little bit about those new opportunities.
Well, the Coroner's Building, we're waiting for the final paperwork to see if it's going to be certified as lead. It most likely will be, but we're waiting on some final paperwork from the contractor showing that the material has been actually recycled properly from the subcontractors. So we had a talk with the architect, and that's going to be basically finished. Hopefully, in the next three months, we will know everything will be certified and presented to US Building Council. The building out there, we're surprised. We basically estimated a certain dollar amount for electricity. We are coming in lower, even though the building has glass windows. So we are very pleased with that, that estimate, and the actuals, I mean, are coming in lower. The EMA nine one one is being designed energy efficient, some things that we are doing. In fact, the estimator is out there this week, taking a look at the building to give us some ideas of what it's going to cost, but they're taking a look at the improvements that's going to be made to reduce the energy. That would be lost through, again, the facing of the building, as well as taking a look, the architects, KZF, has been looking, clearly working with Andy and Nick as to how much heat is going to be given off by their equipment, advising us on better equipment to use, less heat, heat areas, there's another word for it, but heat island, that's going to be given off that we don't have to worry about cooling it within the facility with the, with all the displays that they're going to have to have, and the consoles that Andy's going to have to have for his nine one one operators. So all that is being looked at and will be addressed and is being addressed right now.
And in your building that you oversee, how do we handle, like, Board of Elections? I know that's a rental place, but do we pay?
I have no-
Who pays for that?
I have no involvement.
Do the taxpayers pay gas for electric?
So, that's at least, the Board of Elections is leased, so we work with our landlord directly on that, but in terms of any improvements, from an energy conservation perspective, that would be a tenant improvement through the lease with the landlord of the facility in Baltimore.
Okay, I just want to put that on the, on the docket, that as we're looking at conservation and cost and keeping things down, that those items are looked at in leases as well, because at the end of the day, taxpayers still have some, on the hook for some things as well. So that's what I have. I know I have some others that don't deal with the buildings, but would deal with the fleet of cars and those kind of things that I know we'll talk about in a different capacity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drew House.
Thank you, Mr. Lenny, for being here this afternoon, and thanks for the reports to help us understand how we're improving year after year related to energy efficiency and the work that you're doing. Also, thank you for the reminder that we are part of the Twenty Thirty District Plan, which gives us some goals to try to attain as we move along related to our facilities. So I just want to say that I, too, am looking for opportunities to do better, as I know you are, and Commissioner Reese alluded to. The nine one one EMA facility hopefully will be one of those opportunities. I'm glad to hear that you're already thinking along those lines and have been out there to think about how, even though it's a new, not a new build, even a renovation project offers some opportunity related to energy efficiency. So I'm glad of that. And the dog shelter, I don't know how far in the offing that is, but that will be another opportunity for us to create something that's energy efficient. So thank you to you and your team, really appreciate the efforts, and thank you for being part of this discussion today where we're trying to get a handle on how we can do better on the green side. One thing, the city, as you may know, has a Green Cincinnati Plan, and there are many, many people at that table participating in those conversations. Have you been engaged with the city at all, not necessarily with the Green Cincinnati Plan, but the city facilities folks to share ideas about energy efficiencies?
There is sharing with the Twenty Thirty District, which I'm a member of. I have a monthly meeting, usually the second Wednesday each month, and different ones of us are on it, and we do talk back and forth. Beyond that, no, no direct contact in sharing ideas beyond what's brought up there.
I only mentioned that because they've got a solar panel farm now-
Yes.
-that's generating energy for the city. So I don't know, they are a little bit ahead of us on the Green Cincinnati Plan, which I think we're trying to do the Green Hamilton County Plan. But yeah, I don't know if there are lessons learned there or not, and I sit on that committee. So I'll share things as I learn them.
Good. One thing I forgot to mention, October fifth is Rebuild Conference, it's going to be in Cincinnati, and I've been asked by District Twenty Thirty to do the presentation for this, how successful Hamilton County has been in District Twenty Thirty. So if everything's approved, I will be one of the panel speakers on October fifth.
Very good. Well, you know, that, the front page of your report mentions the twenty four million dollars that have been saved, and it almost looks like a typo, it's so high, but it's really an impressive number, I know, over a number of years, but thank you for helping us to achieve that level of efficiency and savings.
Thank you, yeah. And I see on our Energy Star benchmarking, this building specifically is a little low compared to Alms and Depke, who's ninety, we're seventy eight. So specifically, I know we've been doing some lighting, different lighting and things like that, but specifically, just briefly, what else are we doing in this building?
The problem is, we have a data center up on the ninth floor, and we haven't gotten rid of it, and it creates a problem with the formula we have right now that the EPA is using. When we finish the data center over at the courthouse and we decommission this upstairs, we assume that in twenty twenty three, we should hit seventy five or higher-
Okay.
-based on what our consultant has advised us.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for your presentation.
Madam President, just very briefly, just on the question that came up a couple times on solar, I think Ralph may have hit on it, but just in case, we do have solar installations on our justice, on the Justice Center roof, we have on the courthouse roof, and to Ralph's point, I know his second, his second to last slide, I think hit on the power purchase agreement that we're getting ready to do. So Commissioner Drew House, similar to the city's solar field, that they're looking at, very similar concept with the County Commissioners Association that we'll be working on through a power purchase agreement to draw power for the, for the county through that, through that solar field installation as well, so.
Yeah, and we're looking at, right now, anywhere between twenty to twenty five percent of our electric power would be solar. You can't really go any higher than that due to the fact that you can't store the power to use.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move forward. Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding ballot resolutions for-
I think there, Madam President, there are a couple more, on the conserve to preserve, there are actually a couple more individuals.
Presentations, okay.
Yes, yeah.
All right, so it's my understanding the mic is working, but it's not working here in the building, so hopefully, can you hear me? Is that there okay? All right, very good. So I'll try and keep, keep on target with the volume. So first of all, I'm Brad Johnson, I'm the Director of Hamilton County Department of Environmental Services, and first want to thank you that it's always a pleasure to have the opportunity to highlight the absolutely incredible staff that I have at Environmental Services. So whenever I get down here and get to show some of these things over to you, I really appreciate it. It is going to be a quick presentation, I'm going to just give, for the sake of the audience and for you, give you a quick overview of how the department is structured, because it's a little bit different, and then I'll do some very brief highlights of programs that we do that are a little bit out of the ordinary and, you know, more on the, the green side, so I wanted to highlight those. And then if you remember, we were here in April for the proclamation that you had signed for Let's Stop Food Waste Day, and so there was, I was very happy to hear that you had some questions about the additional programs that we do for food waste. So I have our Food Waste Aversion Coordinator, Tony, here, and he'll give you some updates on that a little bit more detail. All right, so as far as how we're structured at Environmental Services, we're actually unique in that we, we have two agencies. So we have the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency, and then Hamilton County Resource, which is our renamed Solid Waste District. And then you can see, I'll, I have a slide that kind of discusses the, the three sections of the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency, so I'll give you a little bit more detail on that. And then Administration, Communications, and Operations, we're the, the group that kind of makes sure that the department stays on track, and it's also a way, speaking of conservation, we save money that way, because rather than have those groups for both agencies, we oversee together and save some money that way. So the main thing with the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency, a couple of really unique things about that, that agency goes all the way back to the late eighteen hundreds, which is really neat. When you talk about environmental work, it's not very often you talk about going back to the eighteen hundreds, you usually talk about the seventies, when US and Ohio EPA were formed. So it's, I'm really proud of that here in Hamilton County, that we have that heritage. And then on the, the resource side, so they are more in the nineteen eighty nine, there was a state House bill that went through that required, the state realized that a lot of our smaller landfills throughout the communities were starting to fill up, and they realized that we needed to have districts to evaluate that and reduce the amount of waste going to our landfill to conserve that, that space in the landfills. And that, the other thing with the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency, I'll go back one slide, it's important to remember that even though we are the Hamilton County Department of Environmental Services, that's a regional agency. So we fulfill for Butler, Claremont, Clinton, Hamilton, and Warren Counties for that. And as far as, like I said, there's three sections of that Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency. We do, the easiest way to explain it is we essentially are the Ohio EPA for air in a lot of ways. So we are subcontractor for Ohio EPA, we do all the permitting, the inspection and compliance, and then the monitoring and analysis, we do that on their behalf, and then we work with them to make the, to make sure we're meeting all of the requirements of both the US EPA and Ohio EPA. So kind of the easiest way to break that down is inspection and compliance is when we're actually going out to facilities, we're checking on the, making sure that they're in compliance with their permit. If there's complaints, say, for a specific business, we're the agency that goes out and does the investigation and then the follow-up, and we work with Ohio EPA on the enforcement of that, too. And then monitoring and analysis is really key, too, because as you probably know, we have standards in the US that we need to meet for the Clean Air Act, and so I'll kind of walk you through on this next slide. So there's five what are called NACS, National Ambient Air Quality Standards, and you can see the five down there, ozone, PM, which is actually particulate matter. The easiest way to explain that, most people call that soot, it's fine particulate material. The concern there is it gets deep into your lungs, and it does cause some pretty substantial health effects, both short term and long term, they've found. And then we have nitrogen dioxide, carbon monoxide, and sulfur dioxide. So this graph here, what I wanted to show is since nineteen ninety, how much of an improvement we've made on these NACS, the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. And I want you to really focus on the first two. So if you look, we are the turquoise color, so the twenty nine percent to fifty seven percent for ozone and PM. Those are our two biggest problem pollutants that we have here in the Cincinnati Valley. The issue is, is you can- The issue is, as you can imagine, we're, in some ways, we're similar to LA. We're in the valley, a lot of those pollutants will stick around and depending on the weather, especially in the summertime, we do have some substantial air quality issues, which I'll touch on a little bit. But I'm really proud, if you look at ozone and PM, we have beat the national standards on those. And then with the other three, we are substantially in compliance with those. So you can kind of see, we're right on target with what the country's seeing. But we really need to focus in on those two and I'll show you why. So before we go into the air side, I did want to kind of, big picture again, on the Hamilton County Resource side, so waste reduction. This shows from 1993, so in the infancy of the agency, how we have fared with our diversion rate. So diversion rate is, when you have waste, how much of that waste is being diverted from the landfill, which is the intent of the agency, right? So really, in a grand scheme of things, this is a nice measure of the success of our agency. And you can see that nice, the red line is the state goal. So you can see back in the early 90s, we weren't hitting, which is what you'd expect, right? When you first create an agency. And then as time has gone on, we've increased. Now, there's a couple of dips in there. Two of them are really easy to explain. You can see the recession in '07, '08, in that timeframe, we had a drop. And then we also had a drop, which is a little bit more unique from, I believe it's around the, or 2012 up until 2016. And that's kind of an interesting one. If you think about that timeframe, that's when media was really changing, getting away from newspapers, going more online. Recyclable material was becoming, they realized that we didn't have to have those materials as thick as they did in the past. So they were becoming more efficient. So unfortunately, the bad side to that is the diversion rate went down for a little bit, but as you can see, we got right back on track in '16 and we're making improvements every year. Again, I'm really hitting these high level. If you do want details, you're always welcome. We do an annual report every year. It's an electronic report. I believe you're all on that email list, but I always recommend checking that out too, if you have questions. Now, this is something that's not required, but we've always done this because it is good for the community, the pollen and mold counts. So this gives you an idea, the basic idea there is pollen's really high in the spring and mold's really high in the fall. And we do those readings throughout those seasons to make sure our citizens are aware. And we even have, I receive compliments from Toledo even, about the way we do ours because not all of the air agencies in the state of Ohio do that. So I talked about ground ozone being a problem here in Hamilton County. So I know Jeff gave the good news, what about two, three months ago, Jeff, that we finally reached attainment. This is the one that we were in marginal non-attainment status. And again, it goes back to kind of the region, how we're geographically lined up and we do have some coal-fired power plants here. So a couple of things to let you know about ozone is it's not a direct pollutant. It's, I always explain it to my kids, it's kind of like a cake. You have to have all the right ingredients to form ground ozone. And what you need, what happens is, is when you have nitrogen oxides, which you can see the little graphic there, a lot of nitrogen oxides come from diesel engines and industry. And then volatile organic compounds, the VOCs, a lot of those you'll see both in the industrial, but in our automotives, anything with an internal combustion engine, you're going to have volatile organic compounds from that. So the combination of those two things and then you need heat and sunlight, that's what creates ozone. So unfortunately, the most beautiful days that we have in June, July and August, when it's clear, those are the days we have ozone. So you've probably have seen, we have the air quality alerts. That's, there's two reasons we do that. It's actually to alert sensitive groups, to make sure that they're aware and they can take precautions, but it's also to reduce, right? So we actually do, we started a five-day notification to the industry in the area to let them know, say, hey, if you have, we have a day coming up, so if they can change their operations on that day to emit less VOCs, volatile organic compounds and nitrogen oxides, we do that. So it keeps that number as low as we can. The bad news is, and this is kind of just giving you a heads up, again, we got into attainment, but I can tell you, this has been a bad summer. We've had, I just pulled the numbers this morning, let's see, we've had nine air quality alerts already this summer and we've had six days of exceedances. So it's very, very likely we could slip back into that first tier marginal non-attainment next year. I'm keeping my fingers crossed because we're in July and if you've looked at the forecast, it actually looks pretty good and we are right on the verge. If we have one more day, that's probably going to be, because they look at the last three years. One more day is going to really seal it for us. So hopefully, we'll have good weather. And as far as equipment goes, that just gives you an idea of, this is on top of our building at 250 William Howard Taft. We have multiple air monitors throughout the five county region, but that gives you an idea of what it looks like. And then the instrumentation is, that's actually in one of our rooms there at 250 William Howard Taft. So what are we doing? What are some of the programs that we're doing outside of the ordinary, outside of what Ohio EPA requires us to do, outside of what US EPA requires us to do? This was brand new this year. This was a pilot program that we got support from Ohio EPA to do. And what we did was we gave $100 rebate on anybody who purchased a electric mower and they turned in an internal combustion mower. So it's an interesting fact that, I didn't even realize this until I was looking at the research, for every hour you use a lawnmower, which is what most yards take, that's the equivalent of driving 300 miles in your car. So you can see, that's, if you're trying to prioritize how to get your NOCs down, how to get your VOCs down, this is a good strategy. We feel it is. And the program was a huge success. Ohio EPA liked it so much, they gave us an additional $50,000 for the next two years. So we'll be running that again. And of course, being a pilot program, we did 140 gift cards this year. In fact, I think your Chief of Staff took advantage of it, so thanks Kevin. But we learned some things, so we're going to make it even more efficient next year. So we'll certainly look forward to having the board support us in that and maybe help us promote it. Backyard composting, this is something that we did under the umbrella of Hamilton County Resource, right? Because it's waste reduction. But if you think about it, again, this is Environmental Services, it's actually great because it reduces impacts, emissions from, that contribute to climate change. So organics, when they go to the landfill, they turn into methane and methane's one of the worst climate change gases there is. So this is another great opportunity to help in that cause. We've had a backyard composting program, we do seminars, but we encourage that as well. Yard trimmings, again, this is for Hamilton County Resource. So you can take your yard trim, just keep it out of your household waste. Again, that way you're not creating methane and then that yard waste goes to compost facilities here in Hamilton County. And that's a free program that we run throughout the growing season and we open it up for Christmas trees. And this is a new program we started a couple of years ago. I'm really, really proud of the staff that put this together. Again, this is another creative way to kind of recognize and promote businesses that are doing the right thing. The generation's coming out of school now, I'm really happy to report, they value environmental. Some of my best staff are people coming straight out of college because they have that passion. And we see businesses that have that passion too. So we want to make sure we acknowledge that and we award them with that. So we started that program, like I said, a couple of years ago and it actually, it looks at waste diversion, it looks at air quality, water conservation and energy conservation. So a lot of the things Ralph talked about, we use that as part of that model. Household hazardous products drop-off, I know Commissioner Dreyhouse is very familiar with this through the Policy Committee, but this is an ongoing program that we do a one-day drop-off and there's discussion that we may look at a different model for that, but that will be, the date's not exactly secure. We've done it in the fall the last three years and we do, we're looking to do that in October on the western part of the county this year. And then the other thing that's really big with the kind of work we do is I want us to start promoting our work more, so I've been hitting really hard, getting with the media. So again, thank you for the proclamation that you did back in the spring. There's an example of that where we did a whole morning, I know Tony, he's going to talk here a little bit, but he spent all morning in the, over the Rhine with the news crews going through with them. We were on Local 12 for the backyard composting bin sale. And then pollen and mold, we typically do two or three stories a year on that as well. And then I will turn it over to food waste. So as you see, a lot of the programs in Resource were focused so strongly on recycling. Kind of back to Ralph's point, you reach a point where recycling, yeah, you've kind of hit your max, right? So now we're really focusing in on food waste, organics, all these areas where there's a lot of potential. So that's where you're going to see us focusing to improve those areas. And I'll let Tony Staubach introduce himself and then he can talk about food waste.
Thank you. Well, hello. It's good to see all of you. So again, I'm Tony Staubach. I'm the Food Waste Diversion Coordinator for Hamilton County Resource, which I can tell you is my favorite job I've ever had. And I'm not kidding, this is so much fun, this is great work. So we heard a little bit about diversion metrics, we've heard a little bit about challenges in our community. Food waste is our, or organics waste, compostable materials, our largest waste stream in our landfill. So the efforts that we're doing with Wasted Food Stops With Us are to reduce the amount of food waste in our landfill. The goal is to get it to people first, which should make total sense. People who grow food want to feed people, people who eat food want to eat more food. So why do people struggle with food waste? Why is edible food being wasted? It really comes down to the consumer. Our businesses, our partners are doing a lot of really great things. Individually, in our homes, we are the largest wasters of food. So we struggle to learn how to budget, how to shop and how to store food correctly. We overbuy food. We purchase for on-demand use rather than making a shopping list. Food is damaged in transit, either by ourselves or a distributor, but that's getting to be less and less of an issue. Food doesn't fit size and appearance standards. We all like that really shiny, pretty red apple, don't we? Like, it's great. It's also covered in wax. So, you know, learning to eat things that maybe aren't as pretty but are just as tasty are really important. And we have a number of partners who are working to address those issues. Date labels are the biggest challenge for us in Hamilton County. So when you go to the grocery store and you buy your gallon of milk, it says "sell-by", that it's not an expiration date. It is a sell-by date. It's a date at which you know the meek has hit, the milk has hit peak quality. It doesn't mean it's bad. So really educating consumers and understanding that the only thing that expires in the United States is baby formula. Everything else is a suggestion. You have to be your own advocate for your own health and make your own decisions on whether or not something has expired. So what are the barriers? Why are the reasons we see food waste increasing across the country? It's because trash is affordable. It's really easy to throw it in the garbage, right? You know, you're done with it, you just throw it away and that's great. Please do not throw it on the street. Put it in the garbage. But also, try to eat it all. Put it in your compost. Find a way to feed a hungry neighbor. Composting is less expensive and complicated, composting is expensive and complicated for staff. So one of the reasons our large institutional partners have had a hard time with composting and food waste is that composting is cheaper than sending food to hungry people. It's way easier for staff to sort through at a grocery store their materials and throw that in a compost bin than it is to put that in a freezer, drive that to somebody who's hungry or an agency that can redistribute it. So the cost of composting is, although more expensive than garbage, is less than redistributing food. Industrial processing facilities offer simple solutions. So a lot of our food waste is reduced in the industrial process. They find other ways to be more efficient in using food. And then the other problem is that other industrial processes like anaerobic digestion offer a really attractive, beautiful image. So it's really fun and easy to send your food waste to an AD facility where it can be turned into energy as opposed to feeding people. It's that green infrastructure. It's important to do, it's really great, things go to AD facilities, but if we want to feed people, we have to find the right balance between the two. And then limited infrastructure to store and process surplus food. We always run into this problem, especially here in Cincinnati where we are rescuing a lot of food. We don't have the facilities to temporarily hold on to food before it goes bad. So, you know, Kroger is a wonderful partner, they do great things with their Zero Hunger, Zero Waste program. Sometimes they donate too much and we need a place to hold it for a night. So that's something we're always working on. We have a million partners in Hamilton County and I almost say that facetiously, but almost not. We have so many partners who are doing this work, I feel like my role is really to help elevate their voices and bring their efforts to a larger stage, which is happening. Believe it or not, Hamilton County in Greater Cincinnati is doing some amazing innovative work and we are constantly being asked to present on a national stage around our work to reduce food waste and to get food to hungry people. So just a few important notes here, there's only 12. We are part of the NRDC Food Matters Cohort, so the National Resources Defense Council in partnership with the City of Cincinnati. We have a very strong partnership with Cincinnati's Office of Environment Sustainability. We're part of the NRDC Food Matters Project where we're meeting nationally to talk about these issues. We've got hundreds of pantries in Hamilton County. I can't even count the number of pantries we have. They're all wonderful partners, from Kane to the Free Store to Society of St. Andrews, they're all just doing amazing work in these pantries. Refed is the national organization that kind of prioritizes how we reduce food waste. They have been meeting with us, or with me, and I talk to them all the time, I just went to one of their conferences, about how we're addressing food waste in our community and that's starting to influence their next round of policy decisions. So that's pretty cool. Food Systems Education is going on on a regular basis, from our partners at the library to the partners at OSU Extension, who I used to work for. People are educating people on how to access and eat healthy food. You are familiar with La Soup and other upcyclers in our community. You're familiar with gleaning programs, probably that's where farmers are opening up their fields and letting people come on and accept produce that was not ready for sale for donation. And so Society of St. Andrew is leading that work here in Greater Cincinnati. Last Mile Food Rescue is just an amazing organization. I don't think any of this would be possible without their efforts and their support in this. Our office has distributed $116,000 in the last year to help support these upcycling and food reduction activities. You have signed on to our Wasted Food Campaign, obviously, because we run the Wasted Foods Stop With Us campaign, but we also have three communities who have signed on to the campaign this year. We've also been in talks with the City of Cincinnati about their work around different national, international acts. And then, again, always visit wastedfoodstopwithus.org. So there's a lot going on. I love working for the county. It's been almost a year, so I feel like we're really going to see some things happening. We had the Wasted Food Day. We've got a wonderful partnership going on with the County Fair this weekend, so you can come out and I hope to see you there at the County Fair this weekend for our Wasted Food Stops With Us event. And then on September 21st, we're partnering with Last Mile and the Free Store Food Bank to do our first Food Redistribution Day at the County Fairgrounds. So they're going to be exploring some future opportunities to continue to be an access point for our community. So thank you so much. I think, I think that's it for us.
Well, thank you so much for the presentations, Tony specifically. Tony, if you could just answer just a couple of questions. I know you always had enthusiasm, I thought with 4H, you were so excited and you couldn't be any more excitable. But just recovery of food, as you were saying, is so essential. And I see the partners and you said a million partners, I'd like to see a million partners.
Okay.
I mean, when you think about all the restaurants, and I know you've ventured out to find out who wants to be a part of it. So when we have these partners, and you don't have to answer today, I would like to see if there's a map, like the target areas that you distribute to, to make sure that one area is not getting, you know, more than the other, or even the frequency of how often they go out. And then, and personally, I'd like to help to maybe get more partners involved because if you don't, if you're not able to eat, you can't think, you can't do anything.
Yeah.
So this is great, all these partners. But I just want to make sure that every area in Hamilton County that needs it is getting it and also that we just tap into those restaurants that are not being a part of it. How do we market that and get that message out?
You know, I will say, restaurants have been a unique challenge recently because due to the employment shortages, we've had a very hard time getting restaurants to like jump on board and right-size portions and weigh and distribute. And developing an infrastructure to make that easier is really our focus moving forward. The reduction in employment have made it very difficult, or reduction in employees has made it very difficult to get restaurants excited. But to your point about reaching out further in the county, yes. We are working more and more, especially with some of our northern communities, they've all been getting very excited. Coal Rain is one of our communities that signed on to the campaign and so that is starting to bleed a little bit and we've got some of their neighbors getting excited. But we do have a lot of partners who report to us through our diversion metrics. That has typically been, we share that N as an aggregated number, but we could probably parse that out with their permission. We always ask their permission first, but data collection moving forward is going to be incredibly important, not just for us and our own knowledge, but as a region and as a national model to better understand waste. We need better data collection methods and we need better diversion metrics. So we're moving in that direction.
All right. Thank you so much. You might have some other questions or either one of you. Vice President Reese.
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
I also have no questions, just thank you for being here and thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm thinking since we're discussing this, that we might want to go down that we might want to go down to item five.
We've got one more presentation. Joe.
Right, Joe.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's why I don't have my glasses on. Thanks.
Here, he's at the podium.
Okay. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
All set?
You can begin, yeah.
Great. Well, thank you, Commissioner.
Tell everybody you're the Executive Director from Power Clean Future Ohio. Right.
That's right. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. And before I catch a deep sigh, I know I'm on the last leg of this agenda item, so we'll keep it moving quickly and hopefully be able to answer your questions at the end. But my name's Joe Florida and I'm the Executive Director of Power Clean Future Ohio. And I'm excited to talk to you today after the speakers that have already shared some of their perspectives. I think it builds nicely on the incredible leadership that Hamilton County has done on these issues and what's potentially possible from here. And so that's exactly what this organization was founded to do. So we were founded two and a half years ago with the sole purpose to work with local governments in the state of Ohio on energy, sustainability, and climate issues. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit today about climate change and then we'll dive into a little bit more about our coalition, our organization, the resources we provide. So this slide here, you can see some of the climate impacts that the state of Ohio is going to face. I think oftentimes we think about climate change. We think about coastal issues. We think about hurricanes. We think about wildfires and droughts. But the reality is, is that the state of Ohio is going to see severe climate impacts. Just this last month, which is not reflected on this slide here, just this last month, Power Clean Future Ohio, the Ohio Environmental Council, and our technical partner SOTA Analysis issued a report that cited by mid-century, by 2050, local governments in the state of Ohio will need to spend between $1.8 billion and $5.9 billion more per year to contend with the adaptation costs due to climate change. So we talked a little bit about some of the cost savings we saw with energy and buildings earlier. The impacts that we will see coming will far outweigh that if we don't do the work now to contend with this issue. There's all kinds of other things that are not reflected in the dollars and cents, and I want to highlight that. We're talking about, you know, floods in eastern Kentucky, the extreme heat waves in the Pacific Northwest, where real lives are lost, along with things like missed days of school for children. Those are real daily impacts, yearly impacts that we're experiencing. They don't have a dollar behind it but are severe, and we need to take them into account. So we formed this organization because, as we heard a second ago, local government staff have a lot on their plate. They are doing a lot to manage the operations of a city, of a county, of a village. They're trying to make sure that their buildings are as efficient as possible, that their fleets are as efficient as possible. And there's real cost savings and emission savings as a result. But we need to do that plus more. And so we need to think of what are the innovative approaches to this issue. So we formed this coalition and this organization to do just that. There's a lot of reasons to do this, to approach this. And I want to highlight the fact that these next several slides, you'll see a lot of organizations. So I'm going to just quickly skip through four slides here. But what I want to underscore in these slides is the breadth of interested parties and organizations that are at the table for this work. There's an economic reason to do it. There's an equity-driven reason to do this work. There's obviously an environmental reason. There's also a financial one that I already touched on. And all those different interests are represented across this great coalition of Power Clean Future Ohio partners that we have at the table. So so far, we now have, across the state of Ohio, 34 local governments that have joined. We're really fortunate to have the chance to work with some counties. I think counties are an incredible way in which we can accomplish this work, given the footprint and the types of things that you all do on a day-to-day basis, the operations you oversee. And so right now, we work with Cuyahoga County, Montgomery County, and Lucas County. And we're talking to several other counties along the way as well that are trying to think innovatively about how they approach this work, along with several cities, some of the biggest cities that you see on this, down to small villages. And so I think that's an important thing to note. Everyone has a role in doing this work. And it's important to think about it at any scale that you're approaching it. One thing, one other thing I want to also underscore here, there's a question asked earlier about how interactive are the staff among different cities, counties? How are you all coordinating and thinking about best practices? This coalition provides an incredible network to look to one another and say, you know, how have you seen success? What has worked, what has not worked? That's also really important to know as well. And how can we adapt what you've done to our county or to our city or village? So our goals here, first and foremost, are to reduce emissions. Let's identify the ways that we can, in the very near term, reduce emissions, avoid those long-term adaptation costs by investing in the mitigation work that we need to do to bring down emissions. So anything that we recommend is going to have that positive emission reduction impact. Ensure that we're implementing equitable clean energy policy. This is a really important point and one that drives the filter with which we recommend anything. We know that every day, individuals within the county and within cities all across Ohio, they experience their communities differently. We want to make sure that we're addressing some of these historical environmental justice issues by taking into account right from the start. So how do we make recommendations? Provide policy guidance with that in mind, making sure that black and brown communities have a voice in this work and that they're heard. Low-income communities have a voice in this work and that they're heard. Reducing costs is really critical here. We're coming at a really opportune time when the financial, the economics around these issues, the technologies have emerged to where we can save money and reduce emissions. Some of this is innovative. It requires us to go out, try something different, but it's possible. And we can do that. And that's exactly what we want to do by bringing our policy experts and our advocates to the table to help be a partner at the table for you all. We do all this through technical assistance. And so what we've learned along the way, and I'll share some examples of this here in a second, but what we've learned is that, you know, there's often time and interest. You know, there's motivated individuals in the community that want to see this happen. There's county staff, county-elected officials that want to see this work happen. But in order to make that purchase, right, to sign that power purchase agreement, to purchase those electric vehicles, to do this work, you need to have that little education to make sure you're spending taxpayer dollars wisely and doing it in the right way. And so our technical assistants provide some of those planning tools that local governments need. It provides help and recommendation around resources. We can talk about federal grants and other grants that might be available, as well as new partners. Just as a quick couple of examples of some things that we've done. So we work across four key areas. And that's renewable energy, energy efficiency, land use, and transportation electrification. So those are the four key areas where we really focus. We think we can have the biggest impact in communities in doing that work. So in Canton, Ohio, for example, doing a tree canopy assessment. Many local governments have tree planting efforts underway. And so to make sure that we're thinking about that has important environmental justice implications. Many communities don't have green space. They don't have tree cover, which can have severe heat island impacts in those communities and also air quality impacts. And so making sure we're making the right investments in our tree canopy. In Toledo, we helped them pioneer a first-in-the-nation program called 1% for the Environment. So they passed this budget framework to provide, within their capital improvement budget, 1% for the environment. So every project gets put into that tally to make sure that they're spending what they deem is the right amount as a consistent baseline. They also established a commission to help guide some of the projects around that work. With Dayton, we did a greenhouse gas inventory, which is a really important tool to be able to assess. If you're going to reduce emissions, if you want to set a target, we hear targets often in that 2030 or 2050 timeline. I want to be carbon neutral by 2050, or I want to reduce emissions by 50% by 2030. You've got to know where you're starting. And so that greenhouse gas inventory is a really excellent tool to be able to know where are the emissions coming from and where should I invest my dollars. We also know that local government doesn't have control over everything, right? Let's keep in mind what we have control over. So in Dayton, for example, their greenhouse gas inventory found that across the entire community, across the entire city, the government operations accounted for 14%, which is pretty notable. And I think that's an area where you can invest dollars directly and see real impacts. So this is just a quick breakdown of these technical tools. We are constantly in conversation and working to evolve and improve our resources. But these are just a few, a good sampling of what we have available to communities. These are all free tools. And the reason why we have established ourselves in this way is because we know that enough of a hurdle, that financial hurdle, can prevent this, prevent local governments from acting. So you can see a few that I've already talked about. I want to also highlight that one in the top left, the Infrastructure Grant Assistance Program. So we saw at the end of last year a pretty major breakthrough in Congress where they passed an infrastructure bill finally. And now we're seeing major infrastructure dollars invested at the local level. We want to make sure that those are, you know, low-carbon, environmentally-friendly, clean energy projects. To make sure as much of those dollars make it to our local governments in the state of Ohio. And then we're also seeing the Inflation Reduction Act as a potential new way in which local governments can take advantage of some of the provisions within that bill that will hopefully pass Congress soon as well. I'm happy to speak more about any of these particular ones, but I know that the county has also invested resources and worked in this. So finally, just to wrap up, if the county would like to join Power Clean Future Ohio, once again, this is a free resource. We're trying to build a really comprehensive and rich network of communities all across the state that are doing this work. We can't be everything for everyone, but I do think we are a really great catalyst to launch into this work and identify new innovative ways to approach it. We just ask that local governments pass a resolution and appoint a lead. So it could be someone from either of the speakers that we heard already or potentially one of the commissioners. However you all prefer to structure that. That way we have someone to go to when we have a grant opportunity that's available or we have a resource that might be able to work collaboratively with your efforts. And then, of course, throughout the process, we meet regularly. We want to make sure to be as helpful as possible with the key emphasis here that we meet communities where they are. So if you all are ready to run forward and go fast on these issues, we can be right along with you at that pace. Or if you need to work one issue at a time and work your way through the process, that's also fine as well. So with that, I will go ahead and stop and pause to see if there's any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I don't have any questions specifically. Vice President Reese, did you?
I don't have any specific questions. Thank you for the presentation. It's a very good presentation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for being here. Appreciate the information and the work that you've done statewide to move this forward. We've talked a number of times here about our fleets and how we want to, as we purchase vehicles a lot. And so I think we're all interested in making sure that we're doing that in a way that's forward-thinking. As we look at EVs, we look at charging stations, we look at ways to maintain electric vehicles. We need to build that infrastructure and then also purchase those vehicles moving forward. And I think that's something that we've all expressed some interest in. I think the timing of this is good because of the federal resources that are becoming available related to all things. And so I recently saw a map, I believe it was from ODOT, about the charging stations that they are putting in some of the major thoroughfares, the highways, to make sure that we do have the infrastructure as people start to purchase EVs. And that's really the wave of the future. So I appreciate that you brought to our attention not only the infrastructure bill, but the other bill that's moving through right now. I too hope it gets passed because I think now is an opportunity to really bring down federal resources to help us with this work in turning the corner with the county, especially when it comes to our fleet. So super interested in some analysis perhaps that you guys could provide related to where we are now so that we can measure the progress as we move forward with some of our fleet purchases. And also, you mentioned the resolution. I have, my office has put a resolution together with your assistance. And so it has been provided to both offices so we can vote on that when everyone has had a chance to look at that and is comfortable voting on it. But it has been prepared. And so we'll deal with that hopefully here in the near future. So thank you for helping with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Now is there another speaker? I think that's all our speakers. I was suggesting to the board that maybe we could go to item five, update regarding solid waste commission appointments. And then we'll go back up to the levy, since we're talking about solid waste and clean air and all of that. Jeff, if you'd like to say a few words about that?
Certainly, Madam President. I'll be very brief. So on the matter of solid waste policy committee appointments, as the board is aware, the Solid Waste District Policy Committee is a board that is appointed or that's prescribed by the Ohio Revised Code to oversee the development and implementation of solid waste management plan for the county. It consists of seven members. There are four statutorily-appointed members under the Ohio Revised Code and three additional members. An item came before the board several weeks ago regarding the appointment of a waste generator representative for that solid waste, for the county's solid waste management district. The specific rep representative had been the recommendation of the statutorily-appointed members and came to the board for ratification, which had been the process for probably the past 23, 25 years or so. So the item was on the agenda. It failed, it was moved, it failed for lack of a second. So as the administration and council were going back and looking at the next steps for that appointment, it was realized that according to the Ohio Revised Code, it is in fact the four statutory members of the policy committee who have the ultimate appointing authority for that position. So as such, it should not have appeared on your agenda. The appointment was actually final prior to it appearing on your agenda. So the board did what they were asked to do in terms of considering the item, but according to the Revised Code, it had already been, the appointment had already been made. So we are working with all of our departments and agencies just to go back through and check the appointment status and the procedures for appointing to boards and commissions, just to make sure that the procedures are, that we take another look at all the procedures. The Revised Code, as the board knows, can be very different in terms of different boards and what it requires in terms of different appointing authorities. So we're just going back through and making sure that that is all put to rest and that we don't have that situation happen again. No further action is required of the board on this. So again, Madam President, apologize for the confusion on that and turn it back over to you, but I wanted to give that update.
Thank you so much. And the motion itself failed due to much research and much community input as it relates to the specific appointee that we were going to vote on. So for the future, I'm just making it very clear that it's been determined through our Ohio Revised Code that the board does not have any jurisdiction or authority to make appointments. So as Jeff was saying, we'll go back and look at other. It had been done for many, many years. So he'll go back and see what needs to be done now. So we will not be making any motions or approving any of those appointees. So any comments? Any comments? Any comments? Thank you both. Okay, we'll move forward. We have some critical issues. Is Lisa on, on the Zoom? And okay, some critical decisions to make as it relates to our levies that are coming up. Our five year, it would be for five year renewals. And Lisa Webb will be, she's on the line to talk about each levy and we'll move forward from there. Welcome, Mr.?
Good afternoon. Um, I can apologize that I appear remotely, but for everyone, um, there are three levies up for people in November. Um, we have presentations for you, for them, but just a little bit of background while we move through each of them. Um, this is the conclusion of a seven month levy process, beginning with consultants hired and the tax levy review committee spending about six months reviewing each of these levies through countless hours, meetings and their public hearings, leading to the commissioners with their public hearings on June 14th and June 28th, as well as the commissioners approving auditor certificates for various options on each of the levies. Today is the vote for the ballot resolutions for each of those three levies. The deadline for that vote and those ballot resolutions to be certified by the clerk and delivered to the Hamilton County Board of Elections is tomorrow, August 10th at 4:00 P.M. I am going to go ahead and get started just in order and introduce a quick overview of each of the levies and then move to the commissioners for discussion. In case there are any questions before I begin though, I'll go ahead and take a quick pause.
No questions.
Okay. Item number one is actually resolution number 16 before you. And that is a resolution for the indigent care levy that would put a levy on the ballot at 4.07 mils. It is a renewal, not an increase. If there's any questions or any comments related to that levy.
Why don't you go through the three of them, Lisa, and then we can discuss in case?
Okay, that's no problem. The next item would be what would be resolution 17. We have four options before you for that resolution. Though all four of those were the amounts that were certified by the auditor and were considered during the tax levy review process and discussion. It is a 2.99 mil renewal without an increase, a 3.16 renewal, which is roughly, which is a five year inflation increase, a 3.26 mil renewal, which is a 10 year inflation increase, and then the amount that was recommended by the tax levy review committee, which is a 3.37 mil levy. And then the final is the senior services levy. And that was recommended by the tax levy committee and brought forward as a renewal with no increase of 1.6 mils.
Okay. I will, anything else, Lisa?
Nope, that is the timeline for this. As I said, we would vote today. The clerk will certify those and get them to the Board of Elections by 4:00 P.M. The order they are approved is the order they will go on the ballot for November 8th. And assuming hopeful approval at the ballot, we will go then into contract negotiations, RFPs, budgeting, and all of the other details required for the levies.
Okay. And you're, you will stay on in case we have any questions?
That's what I'm here for.
Okay, well, I want to make sure.
Yes, I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. All right, so I'll open it up for discussion. Great summary, Lisa. Is there any conversation as it relates to resolution number 16 with, which is our indigent levy, which is a renewal, no increase? And as she was saying, the recommendation from the TLRC committee. I don't have any comments on this. Vice President Reese, okay?
Thank you. I do have a comment on this. In our last meeting, I had asked about Children's Hospital and CareSource. And I'd like for the administrator, I think there's some, hopefully some positive news to report. So can you please, I didn't want to leave that hanging out there.
Yeah, so we, we did look into that. We had discussions. There was an, there, the Children's Hospital was attempting to work on a case by case basis with CareSource or with the individuals affected by CareSource. But they ultimately, I think maybe two days after we had this discussion, came to an agreement with CareSource as well. So that issue has resolved itself.
Thank you. I just want to say that's very positive because I think that would have had a significant impact on the levy with people out there not with the, with the insurance. And now they will have it. So thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Not so much specific to this levy, but I do want to thank the TLRC for all their work. When there are three levies on a, in a certain year, it, there is a lot of work that goes into researching, talking to the consultants, having the meetings, doing public hearings, and then finally making a thoroughly vetted recommendation to the board. And so I want to thank the members of the TLRC, Gwen McFarland in particular, who is the chair of that board, for providing very thoughtful analysis regarding all three of these levies and for the recommendations that are in front of us.
Thank you. I'd like to just read one portion of this long resolution as it relates to the indigent levy. And it says, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, has determined that it will be necessary, necessary to supplement the general fund of the county in accordance with the Revised Code 5705.191 for the purpose of making appropriations for health and hospitalization, including University of Cincinnati Medical Center, all of which are essential to the health and welfare of the residents of Hamilton County, Ohio. With no further discussion, as we were saying, it is a five year levy and it is renewal without an increase. With no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 16.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. So we can move on to, let me see where my paper is. Resolution, well, can we, let's, if we, let's move on.
For resolution 17, we have four options available for you to advance each of these mileage amounts.
No, I was just thinking if we wanted to do the senior services first, that was all. Because I assumed there would be more discussion as we talk about increase. So that's all, but I appreciate it. So let's go on to a resolution 17, which is a mental health levy. And just from the chair, I'd like to say that I am in agreement with the recommendation of the TLRC committee, which would be a renewal and an increase. And there are several reasons for increases. As we can see and we can hear what's going on in our community, anxiety, depression, mental health issues are just all over the place. And so there's not been an increase in the mental health levy since 2008. And so they've been trying to work with the funds that they have to make it work. And so now there's an increased population that are in need of mental health services. And we don't want to have to cut anything. And so we appreciate them working within the confines of their budget. But at the same time, we want to be realistic and know that things have changed. And so this would be, it would be about a dollar a month more. The additional funding recommendation is 40 million over the next five years, which is a modest increase for property owners. And so I know a lot of people are on fixed incomes. I know it's hard to even get the basic items for you and for your family. But we want to solve a bigger issue. I'm only speaking for myself. And the current levy isn't enough to sustain existing mental health services without additional funding. We've had so much increases in juvenile court and the sheriff's department, just public safety in general. And so we have to, what I don't want to do is to approve what we have now, the renewal without an increase and then have to come back to the people and ask for an increase because we're out of money. And what's important is we only make the recommendation to go forward for it to be voted on. We don't make the decision. So if the people decide, I don't want to increase, I'm not in agreement with, then they don't have to vote for it. But hopefully they will understand in the, in the outreach and education that we give to our residents, they would better understand why we're looking at an increase. So I will open it up to Vice President Reese, which is option four.
Option four, okay. Thank you. I, I want to take a step back as it relates to all the levies. I do want to join Commissioner Drehouse. And I know Commissioner, President Dumis has said it before. I do want to thank all those who served on the Tax Review Levy Committee. It's a volunteer committee. And I want to thank all of you for your very hard work and this is very, very tough. I want to also reiterate to everyone that we are only voting to put it on the ballot so it can go to the people. The people will have the final say. Everyone who is of voting age will have the opportunity to make their determination. But at this point, we've done our due diligence. We have heard from a lot of people, a lot of people showed up packing out the place as it relates to mental health. We hear about a lot of issues in the community and they said we need more for mental health. And so we have heard from the community. My position, as you know, I'm never one to, want to rush to input any increases on anyone. We do understand, I do understand that there are people out there that are struggling to try to hang on to what they have. But I think putting this forward to the people where you have the power, you will be the one to make the determination and for us to get out of the way of that, but provide something with the fiscal information of what is necessary to make an impact as it relates to mental health. I will have to say that we have several different models of increase. And those other models show that if we were to do that, we'd have to be right back at you again with another increase. And I'm not supportive of kind of doing that. But I also want to say to those in the mental health community is that should this pass by the voters, one of my major expectations is that we're able to make a real impact doing some new things, keeping some old things that are good, but also some new things. I would like to see us come back to with something, I know we've got a phone number that's going to go out there and that's great, but I want to see something else because I see various layers of mental health. And we heard that with our folks that came with testimonies. People who had worked in corporate America had been what society would say made it with high education. And they thought they made it and all of a sudden something happened. And the stress or something impacted them or someone had someone in their home that died. Some people concerned about COVID and they just went into a shell. There's people right now trying to figure out, can I make it? And so I want to have something before they totally have to go into some type of diagnosis of, and I'm not a doctor, but to they're at the breaking point. I want to ma, I want to get to them before they're at the breaking point. And I want to also get to them where they could do it in a way and still have their dignity. I have had issues way before I was born, a family that went through it and they didn't have the dignity. So I want someone that doesn't have to worry about, am I going to lose my job because they know something? They prescribed me something, is that going to affect me? How do I not have to be prescribed? Maybe I just need to talk to somebody. Maybe I need a life coach that could get me on the right track before I break. And so we're seeing it on a national level. So those who have a lot of money are able to go and see people and therapists and those. And then you have people that are already broke and in terms of a breaking point and they don't have any money, but they are now in, close to the institutionalization or the medication. I need something in the middle. And I think with all that we're dealing with COVID and is this monkeypox? And every time you turn on, it's something. We heard about climate control. The world is changing and a lot of people can't deal with the change and the stresses of life. So I would hope that if this were, as you're out talking, because you're going to have to convince the people, that we come and say we're, it's a new day, we're not running with the stigma days that we had. And now that we don't have the stigma, we want to be able to have something that everyone at every single step, particularly that middle, because if you're in the middle class, you paying for everything and you just can't afford it. And then you just break. So you have the experts, I would hope that you come back, something that Hamilton County can be a leader that no other county has, that we could have to be able to help people. So with that, I will support the, the increase to go to the ballot. And now you would have to go and convince the taxpayers about the need. And we've heard a lot about the need. And that should be reflected at the polls. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes, thank you. I want to just talk about the frame just a little bit related to mental health in this community and really throughout the country. We were provided some statistics related to mental health needs. One of those was from 2013 to 2019, demand for behavioral health services rose 353% statewide. And in 2021, after COVID, we were led to a 70% spike in the need for adult and youth mental services, mental health services. So I think these data points are important and I think they're compelling. And I know that the TLRC reflected on these stats as well. And so we, we heard from a lot of people, as been, has been mentioned. There were over 100 people in the public hearing. We heard from about 40 of them, all in support of the increase for the mental health levy and for the support of the other two levies at their flat levies, but you know, at their flat levels, they're very important as well. So the increase means that not only, if we were not to have an increase, services would be cut. So an increase means that services will be sustained, those that we already have, and potentially we can do more with an increase. Now, this increase is about a dollar a month per household of $100,000. So it's not an extravagant increase, but it is enough to maintain what we have and add on at a time when we know mental health needs are skyrocketing in this community. And so it will provide for suicide prevention, it'll provide for access to treatment, it'll provide for housing for people with mental health issues. So these are the kinds of things that we're talking about when we talk about this increase. I, I want to say that you, it is correct to say that this isn't our decision. I mean, we're allowing this increase to go in front of the people at the ballot in November. And so ultimately, the community will decide how they want to react to this increase. But I am confident that from what I've heard, the people in this community understand the need for this slight increase and they will support it because I think people, as has been mentioned, everyone feels like they've been touched by the mental health crisis in this community. And we see it playing out every day when we open up the papers and we see tragedies in our own community related to mental health issues. Lastly, I want to say that we had recommendations come forward from the Commission on Women and Girls a couple of months ago. And it's been really interesting to talk to high school age girls about all issues, but mental health is always on their list of things that they want us to deal with here at the county and really community wide. That started back in the inception of the Council, or Commission on Women and Girls. So that was back in the 17, 18 era. The very first thing that was mentioned by one of the high school students was mental health because her sister suffered, suffered from mental health and needed access to services. And that, without any prompting, that has been a consistent theme of the girls that have served on that commission. And they represent teenagers in this community. So I'm especially interested in how this mental health levy will provide services to young people who are, especially post-COVID, really challenged and really suffering with issues related to isolation, learning loss, you, you name it. And so I especially think this is a good time to think about this increase and to put it in front of the voters so they can decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And having 40 plus years as a mental health professional directly can see the impact in, in that field. But you, you don't have to, you can be blind and see the exasperation of the mental health needs in our area, in the world, in our county. So this is just really a necessity because we always say, oh my God, is it going to stop? What can we do? And I think this is just an effort to show this is one thing, one intervention, one strategy that we can do to try to make things better or at least sustain what was said earlier, sustain what we're doing. So, okay, so at this point, I, no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt option four, the TLRC recommendation at 3.37 mils.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have one additional levy to consider, the senior levy, resolution 18. Now I'm gonna, are you going to? So we have in front of us a levy issue, resolution 18. From the chair, I would agree with the TLRC recommendation, which is not an increase, but it's a renewal of the senior levy. And so just would like to say a little bit about what's in this resolution. That whereas the Board of Commissioners of Hamilton County has determined the necessity to supplement the general fund of the county, maintaining senior citizen services or facilities according to the Ohio Revised Code, including a system of home care throughout the Council of Aging and/or service providers for elderly Hamilton County, Ohio residents, including but not limited to housekeeping, personal care, all the essential things that seniors need, respite services for caregivers, home repair maintenance, medical transportation, adult daycare, home-delivered meals, chore services, legal counseling, adult protective services, and durable medical equipment as authorized. And so we also have a resolution here that was, I don't know who, who is trying to do this resolution? Was it you?
You do?
I was going to submit it.
Okay. Well, you want to say what? We also have another resolution to make sure that everything is inclusive as we look at the levy, but it's separate from the levy. But would you like to speak to that, Vice President Reese?
Yes. I first want to say that I do support this renewal for our seniors' services levy. I want to highlight that there were a lot of seniors that came in. They were on walkers and canes and barely could make it, but showed up to talk about how important this levy is. We've got charitable pharmacy, I think, is involved with this levy as well. And one of the things we want to look at is expanding that, hopefully in a partnership with our 513 relief bus, where we can bring it to the people. In addition to that, a part of our 513 relief bus last year, we had federal funding to help people with utilities as well as. we had federal funding to help people with utilities, as well as with their utilities, as well as rental assistance, et cetera. And as we had thousands come, we helped over 4,000 people. But we saw hundreds of senior citizens that came to the bus, and it was heartbreaking that we were unable to help them because they did not qualify for the federal dollars, because they had Social Security. So even though everything went up, their Social Security check never went up. And they were kind of hanging out there as far as, "What else can we do?" And so one of the things that I introduced as a pilot program, and I want to thank my commissioners because they went and supported this, was to put $1,025,000 to create a senior fund specifically that could help senior citizens with their utilities, as well as home repairs as a pilot program. This program was put together in concert with the levy. We had some additional dollars with the levy, as well as administered through Council on Aging with a partnership with SOACT. And let me tell you, people were stopping us everywhere, saying that this was a great program. We established a hotline number just for senior citizens for that program. And we were able to market and get it out, and people, there was a lot of need for it. So today, we have a resolution, and I'm happy to work with Commissioner Drehouse's office to make sure that that program moves from pilot to permanent, and make sure that it's part of this levy. And there still may be some general fund dollars we got to put to help supplement it. But we know, and just like we're putting this levy, these levies on the ballot, when you hear directly from the people, then we were elected by the people, so we have to act on behalf of the people. This is not our money. This is the people's money. And so we know that senior citizens, many of whom have contacted our offices, wanting to make sure this stays in place. I even had a senior who could barely write, and she was shaking, and I wish I had it with me today, to read what she said about how this saved her. So we wanted to make sure as we're going with the levy out to the people, we wanted to ensure the people, through this resolution, that we're directing administration to include the senior utility and home repair assistance program in the senior services levy plan on an annual basis. And again, I want to thank Commissioner Drehouse's office, as well as my office, and then all the senior citizens that came out to the 513 Relief Bus, whether we were in Cleves, Harrison, Ohio, Avondale, Bonne Hill, 79 locations. Corrine Township, I want to say to the senior citizens, "We heard you. We're now talking about putting it in from pilot to permanent." And with that, President, I'd like to move that this be passed, the resolution, or I don't know how we do it, but I'd like to either pass it or get it. I don't think it'd be included on the ballot, but I'd like to at least put this motion forward for the resolution to be passed.
Do you have any discussion, Commissioner?
Yeah, I am going to support this resolution. Yeah, I think that our take on this was that we had a program that was working. It was working well. We want to make sure it is sustainable. And the levy gives us an opportunity for a five-year timeframe to make sure that this program is up and running and funded. And so we wanted to provide the policy direction related to the levy while we were passing the levy. So I think it makes all the sense in the world to do it now, and I'm happy to support it.
And let me make it clear, I'm very much in support of senior services. I know you said you were going to work with both offices.
Oh, three offices, I'm sorry.
I think I'm the oldest one up here.
I don't know, you might be the youngest. No, I'm just kidding.
But anyway, yeah, senior services is certainly important. It's even more important as you get older. So you make the motion, and if you like, you can.
Excuse me. Can we finish voting on the tax levy, item four?
Well, this is part of the tax levy. I wanted to specifically, it's okay if we do this one first, because no motion has been made on the tax levy yet.
Okay. We already have two of them that we have voted on as item four. And the third one is in with item four. So I didn't know if we could vote, finish voting on item four, which includes the senior services.
So you're saying you'd like to have all the levies voted on at the same time?
Together, yes.
Yeah, no, I think just from a sequencing perspective, it might make sense to finish the vote on the levies and then do this as a policy resolution, given that the resolution on the senior levy has passed. So just in terms of sequencing, I would do the levy first and then the policy resolution.
Then we should have designated on the agenda that they were separate, and we didn't, so. So that's okay.
Do I need to withdraw?
Yeah.
I will withdraw the motion, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 18, which is our senior levy. It is a renewal with no increase.
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
Looking for direction here.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. So we will move to your resolution, the resolution of...
Yes, I move that the resolution directing administration to include the senior utility and home repair assistance program in the senior services levy plan on an annual basis be adopted.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay.
Madam President, can I also just say I want to thank the Council on Aging for all of their hard work. And I also want to recognize Sandra Jones Mitchell, who's here with SOACT, and did a great, all of them did a great job working together, getting the word out. I think you got a lot of good compliments, too, all of us did, so thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you for your work, everybody who's there, yeah. Thank you so much. Okay. I'm going to go to the executive session, if it's okay with everybody. The next item on the agenda is executive session. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G2 to discuss the acquisition of property.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.